Okay, welcome everyone. You're with me tonight, I'm on the backside of my cold and the more I talk, the more I cough, so silence is not disinterest, just trying to be careful. We have no signed up speakers for the public forum this evening, so we will move on to the purpose and agenda, Dr. Thomas.
Thank you Chair White, Board Directors. Welcome to the first study session of our new meeting here. Our study sessions are an opportunity to roll up our sleeves, if you will, to really dig into issues, to get clarification, better understanding, and those are conversations that will ultimately come to the board usually as a type of request for support, taking action, et cetera. And so tonight, we have a variety of topics that we're going to cover. And Chair White, I'm going to make a request, if I may, of the board to just move the order a little bit to accommodate for some of our elected officials. My request is that we start off with our policy tonight and go through those policies, and then do the introduction of the mid-year feedback framework, and then also the proclamation. And we feel that by that time, our electeds will be coming from their event that they're at to be able to join us, if that's okay with the board?
Good.
Okay. And then after that, we'll go into our legislative update and conversations with our elected officials, and then we'll close out the evening with talking about staffing and employee group designations, and also a budget update to the board. And tonight will be some background context setting. We know we got several newer members and new members on the boards, we want to give some historical information so that you can help make meaning of some of the context that we'll get into with regards to the budget. And tonight is really for informational and to seek your perspectives on the conversations, namely around our reductions. And that in the February work session is when we would come back to the board with any type of revisions and be seeking some directional support so that we can continue moving forward with the budget development process. Again, targeting, our ideal target was to give out allocations mid-February, but if we, you know, we can talk about whether or not we would need to adjust some of that. But that's when we anticipate that we would come forward with some of that directional support so that we can begin the staffing process, et cetera, and stay competitive with other districts as well. So, those are the topics for this evening, and with that, it turns back to you, Chair White.
Next on the agenda is the board governance policy. We'll be talking more about that at the retreat in February. So there'll be more to come on that. And then we'll just move on to a policy review. Emily?
Chair White, members of the board, for policy 707, there are not any major substantial changes, except for if you go to page three on the edits. The committee had a conversation about making a change to the maximum walking distance in policy, so that if the board in the future would choose to change it from the current 1.5 to two, when talking about budget reductions, that you wouldn't need to go back and revise policy then. So it's not necessarily saying that that is what it's going to be, but because it's a maximum, so we could still have less than that. But the policy advisory committee talked about making it the change to align with statute maximum, so then the board has more flexibility without having to go back to policy advisory committee to make those changes should that be a budget conversation moving forward. So, other than that, it's the typical standardization of terms and order that we have done with our other policies.
Any discussion or questions?
I have a couple of questions. So first, do you, what was the reasoning for moving the definitions to the end of the policies, I saw that across the board? I know MSBA's are in the front, and typically when you're looking at like contracts and whatever, they're in the front so you can understand the definitions throughout the document. Is there a reasoning for that?
Director Mason and Vice Chair Bullion, I think if you can help me recall the conversation from the policy advisory committee, it actually was to match most MSBA policies having the definitions at the end. So we were trying to model the structure of the majority of MSBA's so that they align better when doing comparisons for the structure of those, is that how you recalled it?
That's how I recall it, and just in this preparation for this meeting, going through MSBA policies and seeing that they are not consistently that way, it makes a challenge. So, but prior to this year's policy committee meeting, we had talked about, the policy committee was talking about having consistencies throughout all policies and trying to do that consistent cleanup, and understanding that, you know, some people might like the definitions in the front, some on the bottom, there's always going to be variation, but that was the hope, was to do, to use MSBA's, and they're not consistent either, so.
Yeah, because I know it's in the front, so I was curious.
Yeah. So that's why we started making all those changes this year, is starting to move them all to get the same structure, at least so we have a same structure here.
Yeah.
And then, that way it's consistent with all of our policies. So there was a list, I would say about like 10 to 15 bullet items that we agreed upon at the policy advisory committee of things to like streamline and clean up together, and the order was, and moving the definition to the end was one of those items that we, so you'll see that in a lot of ours where it looks like there's a substantial edit, but really just moving the definitions to the end.
And to just clarify, Director Bullion, what you said, MSBA started to clean up their policies afterwards, some of them they haven't updated in a while, so they are all over the board that place, and they don't update them until they have a statutory change. They don't do what we do, go through them every so often. So the newer ones do have the definitions at the bottom, because like Director Mason, I perform at the top, because that's why I'm used to seeing them in the business world, and also in a legal contract, you'll see the definitions on the top, et cetera, but it really doesn't matter as long as they're in there. Just for historical purposes, a couple of other things that the policy committee did right off the bat was make sure that the legal statutes are all in there, references to other policies, and before, two years ago, we didn't have the actual revisions at the bottom there, and that got added consistently, and that used to be actually at the top, the last revision date, and it was only like the very last one, and now they have the history up there. And that was the decision made by the policy committee.
Is this the first, like, version of them, moving the definitions? Is this like the first run of them, or not, or you've had other ones?
Director Atkinson, I think this is the first year that we've consistently been moving the definitions, but all the policies that we've reviewed to date this year, we've been moving the definitions.
So a bunch have been done, is what? Okay, I was just trying to get a gauge, because I know I, same thing, I perform at the top, but, and I, policy work is board work, so that's, I was just curious if that's still something that we could discuss, you know what I mean?
And I'm just curious, again, I'm hearing that as well, and, you know, style, we all, obviously all have different preferences, but when you think about the average reader who's going into the policy, just channeling the average community member who might not be steeped in policy and whatever, they're going to go into conversations, they're going to go into reading and probably see terms, jargon, whatever, that is unfamiliar. Several of you have made that point. So I wonder if it is the will of the board to, and I kind of undoes some of the work that we have done up to this point, but if it's really a cut and paste to move that, because the other piece that we've talked about consistently, and Chair, or I mean, Director Franz, you just made comment to this, if the definitions are at the front, typically what follows at the very end is the legal cross-references. Otherwise, the end kind of gets mumbled jumbled with legal cross-references and definitions, so if we want to have a consistent format, and if it's the will of the board to have definitions on the front, that way the average reader has the vocabulary they need to read, and then close out with a legal cross-reference. Just getting a pulse on where you all are doing, or where you all support that?
Can I make a suggestion? Because one of the suggestions that I think the policy committee, especially the people that, when I first started on it, and the people that we had on there, in the business world, we're used to not even putting definitions in everything, because you've got to repeat the definitions when they're used repeatedly throughout all the policies. I think one of the goals was eventually to get to an electronic version in which the policies were hyperlinked, and therefore you don't have to repeat them. Right now, when they update a policy or update a reference or anything like that, they've got to do it manually through every single policy. So instead of going through the work of actually moving the definitions, I would prefer if we spend our resources to actually go to a more 21st century format, and have them be hyperlinked within the, within the document themselves, since most people are reading them online.
Yep. And if that's the case, then we can easily do that.
Well then they would be consistent.
Yeah.
If we had a list of these are all our definitions.
And less maintenance for.
Right, right, yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then keeping the legal cross-references still down.
Yeah, I love the legal cross-references, it's great.
All right.
Yep.
Is that doable?
Director Atkinson, members of the board, I honestly don't know how much time that's going to take and with the workload that we have available right now, but it's something that we can aspire to as we've been working through it. And then the interim, we, is the will of the board okay if we continue with the policies as is in the interim, and then once we have that availability to impact all policies, we bring them forward? I believe under the policy, that we would be able to, since it's simply there's an edit, we would just be able to bring that forward to one reading, we wouldn't have to bring it forward because it won't be substantially changing anything, so we could continue to work towards that.
And just to back up Director Herman, that's kind of what they decided before we went through this whole first thing, is they went through every single policy, figured out the pattern that would work, make sure they had a cadence, and then after they got through the first three years, then to go back and look at that to create that online, so we're not moving things in process. That was just, I know that that was brought up, and I think the policy committee at the time that I was on it agreed with Director Herman to limit the workload until we got through all of them.
And just Director Franz and members of the board to add to that, I think it's also because this next year is going to be a really light policy readings for the policy advisory committee, we only have the 100s and 300s, which, don't quote me, but I think it's like less than 10 policies maybe, so we'll be able to do some of that bigger substantial work that year, barring any major legislative changes that might impact policy. We should have a much lighter load than last year was, I think, 88 or 87 policies.
Director Mason, I think you said you had multiple questions?
Yeah, just one more. So I mean, my perspective, I am not supportive of moving to two miles for especially middle school or high school. As a parent of middle schoolers, I cannot imagine allowing them to walk two miles by themselves to school, especially in Minnesota winters and across the county highway and other factors. I know it's a maximum walking distance, but I mean, I don't know at what point we would lean on that or change that. I would hope there's other ways to look at capacity things with transportation, and I guess I'm curious the cost savings with that, and when we would actually require students to walk two miles.
Can I add on to that question, because mine's going to go right into that? Mine's really, what's the impact of it, what's the cost savings? And then if we're going to ask them to do that, where's the safety factor? Especially with, you know, you're talking about, you know, ninth graders and 10th graders and all those walking to the high school, especially with young drivers going into the high school, and, you know, there are some homes that are over by Hamilton Ridge that are 1.9 miles, and then some are at 2.1. So where do we draw the line at when it comes to all these things?
Director Johnson and Director Mason, just to be clear from the get-go, this is just the policy advisory's recommendation for policy, this is definitely not a recommendation in terms of the budget. So, the rationale for the change in the policy was that if the board wants to move in that direction, then they could without having to implement policy changes. The policy advisory committee does not make recommendation on budget cuts or anything like that. So, this was simply to change the policy language, should that be something the board entertains in the future, you wouldn't have to go back to policy to make that change. So in terms of both your questions around costing and impact, policy advisory committee does not get into any of that information, since they're solely around policy recommendations, so I don't have those numbers for you right now. Again, if that was something that we were recommending for consideration from administration, those would be data that we bring forward, but that's not what this policy recommendation is about.
I would suggest hold your questions, because they might be appropriate.
But if it's in policy, they're able to make students go up to mileage.
Yeah, I think what we're looking for is just some freedom to make adjustments higher or lower without having to bring the whole policy before the board. So I would just, questions are valid, but maybe slightly later in the discussion.
Just from a historical perspective, we actually have, and I asked you this in writing, if, we've had some situations where they've come to the board and they've actually bussed elementary students less than a mile, simply because they had to cross 42 or 13, and I believe those are still in place. And so whenever there's a change to the transfer to logistical system, they have brought it to the board prior to that. And we do have some special circumstances like that where you said, okay, it's going to cost more money now, and, you know, and can we get those kids to have regular busing closer?
Just quickly to Director Johnson's question, in statute regardless of the cap, even if it stays at 1, 1.5, 1.5, there's always safety measures are in place, so if they have to cross a major highway, or there's not a sidewalk to walk on, or there's other safety concerns, then those are taken in consideration regardless of what the maximum is. So, again, it could be, somebody gets bussed because they're only .5 away, because there's a safety hazard that they have to cross Highway 3, or they have to cross something else. So, those are already in statute as measures that would, that the transportation routes are taken in consideration.
I would just, I just would say, I mean, we write policy, that's what we do as a board, so, and our district is supposed to follow the policy, our admin is, you know, our administrative team is supposed to follow policy. So, my concern is if we change the policy, are we giving them the will to change the procedure to align with the policy? So I'm not really in support of changing it, because that sort of opens up a can of that they can then change the procedure, because it aligns with policy, just like our cell phone policy or any of the other policies that we've made changes to.
Yeah, and I would just say that when we've changed practices, you know, just using the cell phone as an example, that's something that we engage the board in to make determinations as to how we move forward with some of that. If we're going to make a recommendation for adjusting transportation guidance based around budget, for example, that's going to be a budget discussion, and so the board would support or not support, you know, that budget discussion item. So that, I'll just share that, you know, that's what warrant us to make that change. And I'll just reiterate the fact that there are lots of safety measures and factors that we have to take into consideration in working with the bus company when their routing and all that as well, right now, and so those still stay in effect.
Is there anything in our bus contract regarding the mileage that would have to change? Like, would this have to, if we make the change here, then we have to change with our bus contract?
I don't believe we have that.
I can answer some of these questions.
Thank you.
Members of the board, there is nothing in our contract right now that mentions the mileage. And as a couple of the members mentioned earlier, the concern about crossing unsafe roads, all of that stuff is determined by us. Actually, it's two of us that look at the requests that come in for safety, and we determine yea, nay. I almost never deny somebody something when they're asking for a safety-related pickup, unless it's, okay, my kid has to cross this field. But it's really, we're very diligent when we look at those things and consider as much as we can. When we're looking at this policy, one of the things that we've talked about, it's not that we're asking for a change, it's that we're asking for the ability to change it later on without having to adjust the policy itself. And I'm okay with either of those, and any of the rest of us are, but I'm not going to price out or cost out a change that the board is completely not in favor of for a policy.
Any other questions on 707?
Chair White, can I just ask from the will of the board for bringing it forward to the second reading, do, does the will of the board want us to change back to 1.5, 1.5, or does the will of the board want us to keep it at 2 and 2?
I'm a 1.5.
I like the flexibility, because we also have the statute as well as the safety. So if we come into a situation where, where there is an issue that we need to cover, that we don't have to go back and discuss the policy as well as the budget, as well as the safety, as well as everything else.
Yeah, and I'd like to leave it. I know we've gone over on our bus contract, so, you know, as we're looking at budget cuts, definitely transportation is top of mind, so I feel comfortable leaving it, and if it has to come back to make a simple change of changing it to 2 for the reasons, then there's zero clarification, there's zero misunderstanding of when did this happen, why did this happen? So I'd like to leave it as is.
I'm fine with 2.
Sure.
I'm fine with 2.
You know, sitting through policy committee and listening to the argument of having our policy match statute, and just allowing the flexibility of making changes without bringing the policy back to the board, I can understand the, I can, I can go either way, I, yeah, I just don't have a dog in that fight. So, I'm fine with, I'm fine with leaving it, I'm fine with it changing, I suppose you want me to pick one.
Wait, kind of.
Yeah.
Well, you can think about it.
It's fine to stay, it's fine to stay, it's fine to stay the same.
Okay. I would be in favor of allowing the administration the flexibility to move without, because in reality, the only scenario where this would change would be, like Dr. Thomas says, budget-related. In that case, we'd have a say in it anyway. So I would be in favor of giving the administration that flexibility, so I don't know where we are.
4 to 3 to keep it?
4 to 3. 4 to 3 to maintain.
And when we say maintain, we're saying 1.5, maintain. I will make that adjustment for bringing it to the second reading.
Any other 707?
Sorry, Franz, members of the board, who's going to pull up that next one? I don't believe there's anything major in here, except for, again, just the standardization of the items that we are working on, based off of that list we referred to, that the policy advisory committee created to standardize our policies.
Some questions, what is there? 709?
Chair White and members of the board, the only addition to this policy was some adjustments from statute to add the electronic, sorry, the electric-assisted bicycle. We did receive a question from a board member, I apologize, we didn't get the answers out until, like, a little bit ago, but that is defined in statute, so if there's a need or desire, there is a definition in statute in regards to that. And then just, the rest of it is just, again, the cleanup that has existed.
Discussion or questions on 709?
Director Herman, page four, under minor infractions, so letter C, where it says, "After issuing a subsequent BCR to a student, the bus driver shall meet with the building principal to determine the consequences," right, those types of things. Where it says "principal," is there a way that we can put in there, building, whomever?
Administration.
Administration. I got to spend the weekend with a bunch of parents and just, you know, just talked about a lot of bus things, and my own student, you know, having bus things, and it's not always a principal, so I figured, you know, just leaving it up to open.
Can you say again where you're talking about?
Yep.
Just want to make sure I'm in the right place.
Right here. All right, questions, 709, board?
We're under minor infractions.
What, letter?
C. Letter C.
Administration.
Okay, I did touch that, I just didn't know if that was too broad.
Members of the board, is there any concern with that? Is that the will of the board to make that adjustment? I'm fine with that.
I have a problem with that.
Okay, all right, I will make the adjustment before bringing it forward to the next reading.
That would go in minor infractions, that would also go in serious infractions, keep it consistent throughout.
So, the reporting of principal for infractions changed to administration throughout?
Correct. Okay.
I have it noted.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. On the, I guess it's the second page, under B8, it says, "A school district shall adopt and make available for public review a curriculum for transportation safety education." Do we do that?
Yes, our deans go over bus safety in elementary as well, and then we also run drills in partnership with the bus company.
Yeah, my question was, it says, "Make available for public review a curriculum for transportation safety." It sounds like just, you know, making sure that that curriculum, whatever, we're talking about bus safety, is my understanding, is that it's available for the public to review.
It's online and the student.
Yeah, and we could certainly make sure that a link to...
I don't know if this is statute, I mean, a lot of this is statutorily driven, so that's why I'm asking about it.
Yeah, the training is statutorily required in terms of the public review. I'd want to check with our building administration as to where that's housed, or when we do that, and we tell the parents, we're doing our bus safety tomorrow, do they give them that, you know, link?
Is it online?
Or if it's online on their school website, so we can verify that, that the public access to that is available.
Yeah, and then under, I don't really know which page it is, I'm sorry, but it's "Serious Infractions of Safety Rules." It says, "Some examples of serious infractions of transportation safety rules include but are not limited to," and then it lists them. And my only question is, with, under 2, it says, "Profession of possession of firearms," which we just changed the spelling of it, that's fine, and then it says, "For nuisance devices." I'm just wondering if that should be moved to a separate line, because like a firearm and a nuisance device, if I look up the definitions of nuisance device, nuisance device could be a cell phone, like, it just makes, so I'm just, like, them in the same sentence is just seems kind of odd to have those in the same sentence. Something I picked up. Anybody else?
The will of the board on that? Would you like it to be, the recommendation is to move it to another line, or remove...
Just move the nuisance device to its separate line.
Separate.
Yeah, separate bullet point, yeah.
It's the same thing for me, if it saves space in the same line, otherwise it really doesn't make any difference. It's not substituting, making any changes.
We can change if wanted.
Anybody else?
It's a hard term, so.
Enter, right. And then, lastly, under, very at the end of the policy, number nine, "School Transportation Safety Director," who is our school's, the School Transportation Safety Director, is that Dr. Powers? Okay, great. And then it says, "The School Transportation Safety Director will assure that this policy is periodically reviewed to ensure that it conforms to law. The School Transportation Safety Director shall certify annually to the school board that each school bus driver meets the school bus driver training competencies required under Minnesota statute." Do we do that?
I don't know if it's been done before, but I will make sure that we do it going forward.
Yeah, I think it's, a lot of these are statutorily requirements that's been in here. And then it also says, "The School Transportation Safety Director also shall certify to the superintendent that students have received school bus safety training in accordance with the state law," which I know you mentioned that we do, yeah. And then under 10, "The school board may establish a pupil transportation safety committee." So that would be like an an-hoc committee. The chair of the pupil transportation safety committee is the school district's school transportation safety director, which would be, I don't think we currently have that correct?
No.
Is there a need for it?
We have it.
Okay.
Do we have a need? That's a very good question. I, I haven't seen that we've had that many occurrences that really warrant having a committee, but we definitely could start one.
Well, I would just say that the occurrences that we have had on board goes to our district crisis review committee.
crisis review committee. So de facto, they are serving that capacity. So any infraction that happens, any major infraction that happens on a bus, for example, it would come to our district crisis committee, as well as being processed at the building, the BCRT. So I think we have two committees that's, that suffice for this, both at the building and district level.
Yeah, I was just curious.
It's being, it's being addressed there.
That's everything I have. Who else has anything else?
I just, I had a similar question under that. I wondered if we'd ever formed one, and I didn't know if we needed to put in here. Why would we form one? Like what would necessitate the formation of the safety committee? So that's question number one. And number two, I think we should have students private.
Director Olsted, that language is not exactly verbatim, but very close to being verbatim to statute language around the, the may establish parti, portions of it.
Right. It just doesn't give a reason as to why it would be formed. If somebody's reading this, that's all I'm saying. Like, why would you form this committee? Because it's not a standing committee, obviously. So like, why would you form this committee? Because of a huge infraction or like?
Well, if you don't have other structures in place that can address this, you may want to form that committee. But because we have BCRTs and DCRTs, I mean, it might be written for that purpose. If you don't have those building and central office structures of safety committees, then you may want to do a bus safety committee, is what, is how I'm interpreting the language here.
I'm interpreting the language as the statute just says that you can if you want to, regardless.
If you want, yeah.
Correct.
And nothing's preventing you from doing it.
Sure, yeah, you could add a third. For us, it could be a third.
I'm sorry, maybe I'm not being clear. I, I just, I don't understa, I guess, for purposes of outlining it in here, why, I understand, like, we've got the board and district crisis review board, but why, why would we form this committee? I don't know if I'm, I'm not being clear.
The statute doesn't say why we would need to. It just gives us the right to do it. It doesn't go into any personal reasons or anything like that. It doesn't say why, it just stated that you could if you wanted to. So the statute, well, statutes will never tell you why either. They just tell you what you're legally allowed to do.
The LEA would define their wa, their own why.
Yeah.
We might do it because of a totally different reason than another district.
Yeah.
The why would be at that local level. The what is just being supported by statute.
Director Olsted?
So similar to how we run our charters for other committees, yeah.
Director Olsted, members of the board, if I may make a recommendation, since this is not a current committee we have right now, and it's covered by the DCRT, maybe the policy can stand as is. And should we implement one in the future? We could expand upon the purpose of that and policy if the board, the will of the board supports that at that time. That be a-
As long as it's clear.
One wrap-up question. Um, first page, uh, number one, letter B, number one, is there a reason why we only go K through 10?
Dr. Johnson, that's what's statutorily required.
That's it?
Is the bus training from, for K through 10.
So eleventh and twelfth graders, it doesn't?
Not required.
Are not required?
I would say they would participate if they were on the bus on the given day that the exercise was done.
All right, thank you. Just nothing further on seven oh nine? If you want to seven thirteen?
I have one question. I have one follow-up.
On what?
On the policy we were just on.
Great.
Director Johnson, you had said under the one, about the principals.
Yes.
And I was processing as we were, since you talked about it. So you asked that it be building administration because my, my only concern after thinking about this for the five minutes that we've been talking about this policy, my concern is the principal, it's kind of like, you know, Dr. Thomas, you know all the things, you, you, the principal's the head of the building. And so while a conversation could happen with the administration, that final step being take by the, taken by the principal, so I'm just trying to, if that makes sense?
Yeah, if I could put it into practice context, though. So I think the principal will be briefed on all safety matters that take, that occur in a building. Typically, assistant principals and deans are the ones who manage behavior, probably ninety percent of the time. And if it's serious, the principal will likely be maybe more hands-on. But generally speaking, I think if, if we have only principal in our structure of every district I've ever been in, deans and APs usually are managing a lot of the-
That makes sense. Thank you.
Administration covers them all.
Very good. Thank you.
Vice Chair Bullion and members of the board, on some of our other policies, we've had principal or assigned designee as the standard language. Would that make you more comfortable, but yet still fit Director Johnson's request?
And be consistent.
Be consistent, yeah. So I'm hearing it's the will of the board to change it instead of saying building administration, just saying it's principal and, or assigned designee.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Okay, moving on to seven thirteen.
My apologies, Chair White, I'm just updating my notes. Um, seven thirteen, student activities accounting. Do not believe we had any major edits or changes to this, either except for moving around of items and, again, adding that or designee.
Any questions around seven thirteen or comments?
I just had one question. Under general statement of policy number three, I, I do remember a conversation from attending that policy meeting, but perhaps you can refresh my memory. The school board shall take charge of control over and account for all student activity funds that relate to curricular or co-curricular activities. Is that just basically in our check register that we oversee that? We approve it in the consent agenda? Basically is that, that's the oversight of it, right?
Right. And my only comment was, under that same bullet, general statement of policy, there was an edit for curricular, co-curricular, next curri, extracurricular. The sentence right under there, for consistency, should say the same curricular and, curricular, comma, co-curricular, comma, and extracurricular.
Vice Chair Bullion, thank you for that catch. I'll make that update before we bring it forward.
Anything else on seven thirteen? Move on to seven fourteen, district printing.
Chair White, members of the board, the only major changes to this are updating the name, so it's a little bit more clear that it's a printing and duplicating center. And that it's in alignment with not only copy laws, but also with all district policies to ensure that it's aligned with any printed materials or copy materials that aligns with all of our policies.
No comments, questions?
I had one suggestion. Um, under general statement of policy, there's, um, it lists what's allowed, one through four, and then what's not allowed. And I'm just wondering if we should do an A, that that's allowed, B. It's just confusing, and that wasn't brought up in policy. It's literally just, um, for organization of that policy. Like stating that the first four are items not, that are allowed, and the second four or five items are not allowed.
Like heading this?
The will of the board.
Just an A and a B, adding an A and a B.
The will of the board, comfortable with that addition?
I think you clarified it.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I will bring that forward before the next reading.
Thank you.
Anything else on seven fourteen? If we move on to eight oh two, disposal of equipment.
Eight oh two, we did make a substantial change in, based off a policy advisory committee and, and connection to some of the conversations we just had. Instead of having multiple policies with the same language in it, we removed the majority of the contracts, B through what used to be B, and just linked it back to the policy that governs the contracts and the different, the different monetary amounts. The rest of it then was just structure updates and adding the legal and cross-references.
Any questions on eight oh two or comments? Moving on, we'll move on to number one, community education.
Chair friends, members of the board, it wasn't-
Chair White.
Sorry, sorry. I've been doing that the whole meeting.
No.
I apologize, Chair, Chair White. No, I'm cross-plustered.
Nine oh one.
Nine oh one. Uh, Chair White, members of the board, there was no substantial changes to this policy, except for getting rid of D two, that is no longer programs that are in existence.
Any questions or comments?
You're, you are going to move the numbers up, correct? On all of that?
Yes.
It's just not annotated on here. Okay.
And, uh, Director Johnson, are referring to general statement will not be two instead of three?
Yes, all right. It wasn't annotated. I didn't want to.
Good catch, thank you.
Yes.
Any other discussion or questions? All right, moving on to nine oh one point two, technology at public meetings.
Chair White, members of the board, we are recommending removing this policy in totality. Cable channel seventeen is no longer in existence, making this policy obsolete.
So I have a question. As we, I mean, we're hearing from the community with the lack of newspaper, we now have the PL Compass, which is an online news media. I just did a quick search on how does our city council communicate with the, with the community? And it looks like they use PL TV MediaCom channel eight oh eight and then Vera channel fifteen. So my question is, is rather than getting rid of the policy, because we don't have cable channel seventeen anymore, is it possible for us, in order to engage, continue to engage with our community, to just change the TV channel that's consistent with the city council that they use?
Director Atkinson, I would want to make sure that we would take a look at that and what's a viable option. Obviously, we'd want to look into the cost of that as well before committing to, to doing that. We have statutory authority to be able to publish our communications electronically, um, as, as it is. And so before, we would say, a recommendation, I'd want to make sure we have more information to bring forward. If that's something that you all want us to cost out.
If it's possible.
Yeah, I mean, I think all that conversation-
I don't know what they're doing from a technology standpoint, but like, I think, I thought it was great that they had it actually. And then we could direct people to that this is on the TV channel.
Well, we livestream it, so with, with, that we do it ourselves with no additional cost. And I can't imagine us going back to that. And I think that, you know, obviously we have more than one city, and a lot of them do livestream them, so I don't, I don't think it's worth the effort to go back and look at trying to get a cable TV program back up, especially a local channel that most, a lot of them aren't even offering anymore. And live streaming is easy, cheap, and not free, but because we put work into it. But I don't want to see us go back to a traditional cable channel.
Yeah, it seems to me like the traditional cable channel twenty twenty-five is the livestream.
Well, my only concern is, my only concern is we do have an older community. We have a lot of older, and they, a lot of older people don't access the internet. And they've been pretty loud and clear that they're upset that we don't have a newspaper, paper. So I just thought, if it's possible, because that's where they, people would go to watch the city council meeting, I don't know what it takes from the backend side of doing that. But I was just actually excited that there, I thought, wow, what a great way for us to, you know, bring, get more information out about our school district if it's possible. I have no idea what the cost is or whatever. That's a factor.
Director Atkinson, member of the boards, um, when, member of the board, when we were reviewing this, Director Munson pulled some data. And in the two thousand twenty-one survey, it was listed as a one percent of source of information from the community survey. And the two thousand twenty-four is listed as a zero percent. So that was another factor that went into the recommendation to remove the policy. I don't know if that's helpful for this conversation or not, but just to show some data, knowing that things are different than they were in two thousand twenty-one, because the new pa, new newspaper existed then versus now. But just so the board is aware that data was pulled prior to the recommendation to remove the policy.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to give them other board directors. I, I know other school districts have utilized TV coverage. Well, so I'm just curious what other people think.
I'm comfortable with what the livestream is, sits right now, because we can't, we can't control how the media is changing and offer what we can offer at the most efficient. We don't wait for us to do it. But to me, I think we're doing what we should be doing, making it available to the most people possible. And hopefully, the, the online paper picks up some steam and other outlets begin to fill in the gaps that have been lost due to the rise of local channels and the newspaper.
I, I don't really have a preference. I guess it doesn't hurt to ask if there's cost involved. If it was, you know, if there's no cost, then, yeah, I don't know what that effort looks like, but.
So just eliminate the policy and move forward?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I think too, I, I think there would be some cost involved just from an equipment standpoint, just to make sure that we would be com- compatible, compatible, um, uh, to be able to do anything on it, on TV channels, just because through work, I'm aware of some of those different kinds of, um, needs necessary. And I just think, we're looking at budget cuts. I just think it's something that we don't necessarily. There's not a demand for it, so I, I would rather use our resources elsewhere.
Really curious about the logistics, because we used to broadcast it on cable when there was no such thing as a livestream. Well, now we're, so how would both work, just from a logistical standpoint? I just don't think it's-
Then I'm hearing that the will of the board is to move forward with removal of the policy. And should that change moving forward, we'd bring the policy back for consideration. Chair White, that is all I have for policy.
All right, thank you, Director Herman. All right, we're at the point of the agenda now. We're gonna move D and E to the next part of the agenda. Is it, Dr. Thomas, you are?
Sure.
Maybe your feedback.
Yeah, I'm just, uh, some context for the new board members, or in newer board members, Chair White. But this is the evaluation framework that we moved into the MSBA format after my first year here. It used to be a checklist against a job description versus the standards that are aligned to the state of Minnesota. And so what you see here uploaded, it's just more of your background context, so you understand the structure of how the evaluation process moves forward. So we have strategic plan goal alignments listed there. We tie it to MSBA standards and then the elements that are within the MSBA rubric. And then there are progress indicators agreed upon, and then some examples, not exhaustive, of different artifacts that would be applicable for utilization when we do the end of the year kind of ranking and scoring. And then as well as contextualizing your mid-year qualitative feedback. So that's what you have before you. So you can take a look at the, this rubric comes directly from the MSBA templates that you see here on the first couple of pages. And then scrolling down to the mid-year, very similar to what we do with all of our administrative reviews, we have mid-year check-ins. I have mid-year check-ins with all of my reports. And that's where we're reviewing kind of work to date. And oftentimes, they will have various artifacts that they submit to have the conversation, and I can provide some feedback to them. Obviously, I see their work on a daily basis. Those of you who've been around a little while, you've seen the work. So it's not exhaustive, but certainly you could reference a variety of other data points. But you will be getting a confidential link at the end of this meeting. Dr. Jenny Zumbusch is the confidential employee who manages this. I don't think she'll send that out to you. And it will look like the mid-year form that you see here. There will also be hyperlinks to a variety of artifacts just to have some context. And again, you're not wedded to those. You know, a couple of you have only officially seen my work for two weeks. And again, you're not wedded to those. You know, a couple of you have only officially seen my work for two weeks, but, you know, it gives you a sense of the, the type of things that I've been engaged in. And then, at the end of the year, we'll also do the same push-out, but then there'll be the, the scoring rubric at the very end of the year. And there'll be additional artifacts that will be added as well, because some of the work is in progress, and some of the work will be completed by year's end. So look for that link. Again, it'll come, Dr. Zumbush, is that from you, or is that from Martha?
Probably from Martha.
Yeah, I think it's coming from Martha. I was trying to think, the access link is owned, we'll, we'll figure it. It's, it's going to likely come from Martha, but in there, there will be hyperlinks, and then you'll have the app, area that you provide feedback on, you know, what is working well. You can provide feedback on what you'd like to see more of, or changes, or improvements of. And then that information will come back for a closed session in the February business meeting. And then, between that time and that February meeting, Dr. Zumbush will meet with the chair to get themes of all that, because I don't, I won't have all access to all the feedback that's provided. But there'll be one report that's then given on behalf of the board in, in the closed session at the February meeting, so... And that will allow me to then make any adjustments along the way, between now and the end of the school year, at which time then you'll do the full eval in that rubric ranking sheet. So just wanted to give you that context of how we got here, so you understand the form and where we move forward between now and the remainder of the year. So.
Is there a deadline?
Uh, yeah, that, that will be, that window will be open for a week's time to provide that qualitative feedback. And then it allows Dr. Zumbush to coalesce and scrub the data, to make it a common narrative. And then that information will be compiled so that we can get it ready to upload for the closed session in February, or whatever that February date is.
All right, any questions?
Okay, our electants are here. Do you want to quickly, do you just read the proclamation, and then we'll bring them in?
Jessica Mason, would you mind reading the proclamation? You can scroll up quick, and then I'll...
Okay, so proclamation, school counseling, online for all students, February third through the seventh, twenty twenty-five, whereas the school board of Prairie Lake Savage Area Schools acknowledges and celebrates the role played by school counselors in the holistic development of our students, and whereas school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents as these traits relate to career awareness and development, and whereas the dedication and expertise of school counselors are instrumental in providing support for students navigating academic challenges, fostering interpersonal skills, and making informed decisions about their future. And whereas school counselors work with parents, teachers, and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves, and whereas school counselors make profound contributions to the academic, social, and emotional growth of our student body, promoting a positive and inclusive school culture. Therefore, the PLSAS Board of Education does hereby proclaim, February third through the seventh, twenty twenty-five, as National School Counseling Week in Prairie Lake Savage Area Schools.
Thank you for reading that, and I will come before you again, you get used to seeing me up here. It seems a lot of the little groups I support are the ones that are celebrated, which is really fantastic. We're very grateful for our counselors. I know sometimes people are like, what do they do? But all those things that Director Mason just read are, are what they do on a daily basis. They're supporting kids. And if you're not talking, you know, to your school counselor at the middle school or high school level, I suggest you do. I mean, I know they've been a great point of contact for my kids in the district, not just for them, but for me when I have a question and they need extra support. So I am very grateful for them. Thank you for recognizing them, and very much. Thank you.
All right, our legislators are here, I will correct them.
Chair White, you want to do a quick five-minute recess, to get them situated?
No worries.
Just to make you look in biotech break themselves?
Biobringing, nothing.